I'd like to call the meeting order for January 12, 2016. We can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
All present.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I could have you all stand for just a moment, I'd like to offer a quick moment of silence for those four individuals that were massacred today in Istanbul. I have a speaker card here from Lori Alderman on the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Alderman?
Every council meeting, you all dutifully say the Pledge of Allegiance. I hear you say the words, but I wonder if you feel and comprehend what you are saying. Do you feel or comprehend the last part of the Pledge of Allegiance? Do you believe in justice for all? Do you know what justice for all means? Let me give you some definitions. Number one, the quality of being fair and reasonable. That's from Webster's Dictionary. Number two, just behavior or treatment. And that's from the Oxford Dictionary. Some synonymous words are fairness, fair play, equity, even handedness, impartiality, honesty, and morality. If you were all truly honest with yourselves, now knowing the meanings of the words of the Pledge of Allegiance, do you feel the Pledge of Allegiance is honored in these council chambers? My thoughts are that these words and this pledge isn't honored in this room at all. It's time for a new year now that these words were truly felt and honored by you all and reflected in your actions in the council chamber.
Thank you. Mr. Barich?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Barich. I'm a former city councilman here in Qatadi. And I want to thank the city council and welcome you to a new year here. Regarding the Pledge of Allegiance, I think it's good from time to time to remind the council and the public that the Pledge of Allegiance is very important to us, but we almost lost the Pledge of Allegiance here during these meetings some years ago when I was on the council. Bob Coleman had suggested that maybe we revisit the Pledge of Allegiance and think about maybe removing it as we were considering the issue of a moment of silence. And we discussed it. Pat Gilardi actually had mentioned that she didn't think it was a good idea. And I urged Coleman, and I knew where he was going with this, and I wasn't going to support it. But we still have the Pledge of Allegiance. And I don't remember if any of you were there, present at that meeting that night to speak out on it. Maybe Susan Harvey was there that night, but I don't remember the rest of you being there. But I want to bring this up because it just goes to show how close sometimes a city government can come to losing something very precious. And the Pledge of Allegiance isn't anything to take lightly. And I do want to thank Wendy Skilman tonight, who did move to the side and allowed everybody in the room to have clear vision of the flag, which is proper etiquette, because we know that in years past, we didn't get that. We had council members who stood in front of the flag in defiance. Mr. Landman was one particularly that we asked so passionately and so nicely to please if he would just move to the side, and he just refused to do it, which is so stubborn. But I want to thank Ms. Skilman for moving to the side. And Mr. Deloso has always been very genuine and very courteous about honoring proper flag etiquette. So good luck tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Moving on. Can we get a approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
There's a, I sent an email, there's a... The minutes are wrong. I sent an email to correct them, to you, Mr. Moore, and Tammy. The technical difficulties and everything went all the way through to the Design Review Committee. It didn't happen, the break went, there wasn't any video, all the way to the Design Review Committee once. And the long break was right before the, there was like the smoking ordinance, and all that was before the long.
Thank you. Ms. Alderman? Would anyone like to make an amendment to the minutes indicating that the minutes reflect a later technical correction on the web streaming?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, with your forbearance, just want to confirm with staff, is that in fact finally what did happen? Because I know there were some mixed messages coming back from the control room. Is that a correct assessment of what was going on with the webcast last meeting?
The first couple items were not webcast because of the technical difficulties which you picked up after the...
I'd be happy to make that motion with those corrections then. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show that's a five oh vote. And right now, we're going to address our housekeeping items of our city clerk. Ms. Taylor would like to read those for us.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following. Silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways do carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the designated tray located by the city clerk, and when their name is announced, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city councils.
Thank you. Ms. Barich?
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Pardon me, Ms. Barich. Is our timer working?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It is now.
For the betterment of the community, I'd like to add that we need to review this whole hoax that's been committed on the city of Qatadi regarding housekeeping rules, which were once called housekeeping items, which have been referred to as simple courtesies and so forth. The fact is, nobody has the leadership qualities...
Mr. Barich, may I interrupt you for just a moment? We are going to be addressing that in a future item here in the next couple of meetings. So that might save you...
Well, that doesn't account for tonight, sir.
It might save you a lot of consternation?
That's not consternation. It's called constructive criticism, sir.
Thank you.
I would ask you if you'd not interrupt me once again. Thank you. So, for the last two years running, the council has been silent on my questions regarding where these housekeeping rules ever came from. For two years, complete silence. You know, you council people, you continue to ignore the issue, month after month, year after year. The fact is, if you can't say or prove where these rules ever came from, they simply don't And Mr. Moore, more than, I guess, two times now, you refer to these housekeeping rules as common courtesies. Now, if they are common courtesies, why is Tammy Taylor repeating them time and time again, week after week, month after month? Are you implying that everybody in the audience is stupid? That we don't have common courtesies or don't practice common courtesies? It's absolutely ridiculous. Now, when was the last time a tripod was ever in this room? I've been here almost 20 years. Maybe once there's been a tripod in this room? And speaker cards? Speaker cards are not required. They're optional. And you have a duty to tell people that if you require speaker cards from everybody in here, it violates the Brown Act, plain and simple. Now, you are supposed to vote on such matters as housekeeping rules. You're not supposed to just imply them or make them up in the back room and just hold hands out of public view and make policy this way. That's not the way city government is run. They're important. Housekeeping rules are important. When you tell people, the public, what they can do, what they can say, how they can move, they're important. They demand public input and a healthy discussion from the council and a solid vote. For two years, we've gotten none of that. You know, I've asked so nicely over the years to please put this on the agenda. I've been met with silence. The silence has been deafening. The consternation has been, you know, kind of dumbfounding. The arrogance, you know, breathtaking at times. I hope this does come on an upcoming agenda. I've asked for it for two years, so I welcome the council to put this on the agenda like every other city has done in the state of California, to come up with some rules...
Thank you, Mr. Barich. Your time is up.
Thank you. Can I have one more?
No, I allowed you an additional 14 seconds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So now, we are going to take a brief recess for a reception. And the receptionist is going to recognize the outgoing for Mayor Skilman. And at this time, I will open up the reception agenda item to the public, if anyone would like to make any comments. Mr. Barich? Surprising.
Well, let's look back at this last year as Wendy Skilman is mayor. Wendy lied to a federal court on a civil rights action against the city and cost the city well over $100,000 in legal fees. She continued to interrupt citizens often here at this podium. Not once did she ever return my phone call. Not once did she return an email. Not once did she ever agree to meet with me, unlike the other council members, by the way. She refused to meet me in good faith, and in doing so, broke the public's trust. She failed to ever meet with citizens downtown at Redwood Cafe for a meet and greet like Mayor Landman and Deloso did. She was too busy. She was too busy for that. She's been silent regarding the phony housekeeping rules that you set forth. She used her position in the DA's office to get a plea deal for John Moore on a criminal complaint against John Moore.
I don't work at the DA's office.
Excuse me?
I haven't for the last five years.
Ma'am, please do not interrupt me.
Just trying to be correct.
No, you have time to interrupt. When my time is over, okay? All right. Think you know the law by now. Skilman also scolded me for shaking my head from side to side when people were lying on the council chambers, trying to control my body language, telling me, "Mr. Barich, control yourself." Here's a woman who won't even let me shake my head without interrupting and without scolding me in public. As a mayor, you get a fat F from me. You failed and embarrassed our town. You don't have to thank me. Wendy led from behind, never submitting anything to any newspaper, never a column, never an Skilman supported the silly roundabout plan. She supported higher taxes in Qatadi, more needless regulations, and enabled a bad police chief. Wendy doesn't respect our rights to record police officers in the course of their work any more than the chief does. Wendy never attended a Rancho Adobe Fire District meeting, never sat next to me, was involved in our public safety services here, never insisted the police chief wear a body cam when he's threatening people to arrest people, and has presided over a town in decline. It's very, very sad. That's your legacy as Mayor, Skilman.
Thank you.
Ms. Nixon?
My name is Cheryl Nixon, prior to Qatadi. And I want to come up here and just give Wendy a big, fat A+. Thank you, Wendy, for your service, as I thank all the council people for their service, because I believe this is not an easy job. And I appreciate that you listen to the businesses in town and that you are, have the best, you do all have the best interests of Qatadi at heart. It shows. To the normal person, it shows. I just want to thank all of you. And congratulations to Suzanne and John. I'm very happy that you're where you are. And thank you for supporting us, citizens of Qatadi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon. Anybody else would like to speak on the reception item? Being non, we'll close public comments. And now, I would like to present Mayor Skilman with the plaque as the outgoing mayor. Former Mayor Skilman, did you have any comments you'd like to make at this point?
Oh, thank you. No, I just really appreciate everybody being here tonight. And it was a challenging year, and I think one of the challenges, too, is being a single parent and working full-time. So I don't think I was probably the most accessible mayor that we've ever had, but I did my best, which is all I could really do. So I really appreciate all of you guys being here tonight. It was a wonderful year. I was glad to see businesses opening, getting more people in town. Especially love having a super burger, but that's just me. So anyway, thank you all very much. And I haven't been at the DA's office for, I think, the last five years. So just wanted to correct that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Deloso?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I, too, want to give former, former Mayor Skilman, I guess? No, your former, because, yeah, that's you, a big fat F. I think you did a fantastic job this past year. And I really don't see this town, I mean, having a real pulse, being on the council and talking with staff at a regular basis, I really don't see a town in decline. I see a town that's taking a nice turn upwards in a positive way from an economic standpoint. It's not a fast-growing economy anywhere in the country right now. So I think, you know, we're taking small steps. We're moving forward. And you do that by being in a leadership position, which you served in just this past year. And so I want to thank you personally for all the work you did do this past year. You may think you weren't as accessible as others, but you were very accessible, and you certainly never missed a meeting and did all the work that you have to do, which is extensive. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
I also would like to thank ex-Mayor Skilman. You comment about not being accessible and not doing things. And my recollection, you know, meeting after meeting, when you would say all the things that you attended and attended for the city and on behalf of the city, I think you were very accessible. And I'm really proud that you were able to represent our city in that fashion. And I certainly appreciate the work you did, and I appreciated working on our subcommittee together.
Councilwoman Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a very enjoyable time watching Wendy Skilman as our mayor, our outgoing mayor. Wendy Skilman was our mayor last year. What really struck me as remarkable, it was nice to see a new generation stepping forward to take the reins and help move this city into this next century that we're all beginning to move forward in. It was good to see somebody, you know, you see a lot of times in politics, it's people who are retired, it's people who have more time. And here, we have somebody that's working full-time, raising a teenage son. And for those of you who remember what it's like raising teenagers, not everybody's had that experience, but most of us have, it takes a lot of your time, who stepped forward to do, I believe, an absolutely remarkable job for this city. And certainly running some rather difficult meetings, where I'm sure her experience in handling an unruly teenager at times was very useful in some instances. But nevertheless, it was a pleasure working with you. And I certainly want to share, too, one benefit we've all had. This is the first time we've had somebody who brings an outside legal experience. And having that in addition to our already well formidable and well, very knowledgeable council, was a really good one-two for Qatadi. I think that was very helpful on a lot of levels. So we've noticed, we've appreciated, and I just personally say, I really enjoyed working with you, Wendy. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that. I thought former Mayor Skilman did an excellent job as mayor. I was honored and privileged to work with you. I think you did a commendable job, as Councilmember Harvey indicated, Vice Mayor Harvey indicated. You did show up a lot of different meetings and events, and I think you did a commendable job. And I look forward to serving with you further. So thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we will take roughly a 15-minute recess and have a little cupcake fairness. Thank you. Call the meeting packed to order at 7:40. And again, thank you, former Mayor Skilman, for an excellent job. Now, we're going to go to announcements. The city of Qatadi has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall. That's part of its Qatadi Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information for developers, current Qatadi business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Qatadi Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Qatadi Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call 794-0304. Citizens interested in receiving City Qatadi community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. For answers to frequently asked questions regarding storm emergencies, see the city's website at qatadicy.org. That would be ever more topical these days with our current El Nino. And currently, we have artwork from the eighth-grade class Thomas Page Academy that's on display in the south corridor here at City Hall. These works of art were inspired by Van Gogh's Starry Night. And last but not least, we have the Qatadi Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, Saturday to 30th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, where we will recognize our Qatadi Citizen of the Year, Ambassador of the Year, Chamber of Commerce Ambassador of the Year, and Business of the Year. So we would invite you all to come to that. The theme this year is psychedelic 60s, and our host will be none other than Rick Minervini. So we encourage you all to come out there. It'll be a fun time. And now, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obit, to introduce one of our newest staff members.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, members of the council. So tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce Ashley Wilson, our new recreation coordinator. Come on up. So Ashley's been working in the recreation field for over 10 years, starting out as an after-school program leader and literacy tutor through AmeriCorps before she moved to attend Chico State University. While at Chico State, she worked part-time with the Chico Area Recreation and Park District in their after-school program and summer camp. She quickly moved up to become both site director and camp director, followed by recreation specialist. Eventually, she was able to take on a recreation coordinator role there, where she worked alongside the recreation supervisor managing 13 after-school programs, 125 staff, and over 1,500 children each day. In 2013, she started at the Greater Vallejo Recreation District, where she began working full-time, operating the Vallejo Community Center, which included overseeing upwards of 25 contract classes for people of all ages, managing facility rentals, assisting with community events, and serving thousands of customers each month. Since beginning in Qatadi in the middle of December, she's quickly putting together all of the nuts and bolts you need to run a recreation program here, and has been actively seeking out teachers and opportunities to partner with organizations in the area. Most importantly, she is looking for community input on what programs our potential customers want. We are soliciting through a questionnaire, we're soliciting our potential customers through a questionnaire, which you've probably all seen in the utility bill mailer. It's also on our webpage, and hard copies are available at our office, which is in planning and building currently at this time. And also, it'll be posted on the city marquee next week, again, soliciting any ideas or thoughts that people in the community might have about programs they want to see. And that'll be through January, which we'll use to help us form the programs. And with that, I would be happy to turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity. I'm really excited to be in Qatadi, close to where I grew up in Lake County and in the small-town feel. I care deeply about community, and that's, you know, my biggest goal here is to help build that with recreation programs. And we actually have copies of the survey out on the table in front of the city manager's office, if anybody wanted to pick them up tonight and turn them in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. I don't know if the fellow council members would like to make a comment?
Yes, I just want to say, welcome. I was getting really exhausted listening to your qualifications. So it sounds like you really have some great experience that you can bring to our community. And so, welcome to Qatadi, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. You, too.
Councilwoman Deloso?
Don't even have to use my name, just point. Ashley, welcome. I met Ashley back in late December, one day, when we were doing some events over there. So I just want to be clear on all of those great accomplishments from past jobs that the city manager is reading is this year's work plan for you. Same numbers, so just shoot for the stars, and it's great to have you here. We've been, you know, looking to fill this position for some time. I've talked a lot about it, so it's great to have you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, welcome, Ashley. I was pretty impressed you got right to work with that survey right away. Figured you had a roomful of people, so you're going to take advantage of that. I like that. That shows good hustle. We'll see that staff notices that. I wanted to ask you again, the number went by me, that was 125 staff you had, and how many kids, roughly?
It was 13 sites, and many of them were almost 200 students, so it was over 1,500 each day. We had divided up over 125, mostly college student staff that were working out in the after-school program.
I think you're ready for Qatadi. I'm impressed. Well, I welcome you here. We have, you know, seriously speaking, this is a wonderful thing to see happen. We've, like everybody, had some tough years, and to have a chance to see some of these good things come back. We have the infrastructure. We have this city center complex here, which is underutilized, and now you will be able to take full advantage of it. We have a lot of other really good things to leverage, and I'm sure you're already finding. We have a lot of community partners, and I think I know a couple that might like to work with you and help leverage the most they can. So welcome.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Welcome. I am just so excited. It was really a sad day when we had to get rid of our recreation department, so I'm very excited about this. I'm also excited that you're used to dealing with children's programs, because that is one of the things that we need to discuss as a council, and it is in great need in this county and in particular in our city, as well as elsewhere. So I'm very excited that you have experience in that and can help us with that and get some recreation going again. So welcome, and I can't wait to see you get all these things done this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, thanks so much. Welcome to Qatadi. I look forward to this, as some of the other council members have expressed. We've laid a lot of groundwork in the last several years, and put in a lot of hard work. I think 2016 is going to be a fantastic year, especially... I think 2016 is going to be a fantastic year, especially some of these resources that we have that are underutilized, and we can kind of allow the community to partake in some of those things. So, welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
I will open it up for public comment on the new recreation director appointment. If anyone would like to speak. Mr. Berich?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. If you don't call me Councilman Berich, I will call you Mr. Moore as well. Listen, we didn't have necessarily, we didn't have to eliminate the recreation department back in 2009.
This is on the existing appointment.
Yes, it is. Well, I'm going to talk about the recreation department.
Yep.
As Ms. Harvey brought up a point, I want to address Ms. Harvey's comment, which I am legally allowed to do. Ms. Harvey mentioned that we had to eliminate the recreation department some years ago, and the fact is that that is not the case. The finance director came to the city council and gave us options for a 10% across-the-board budget cut, salary and benefit cut, a 15% and a 20%. And the 20% across-the-board salary cut enabled all city employees to remain employed, all, and put $54,000 in the general fund as surplus. The city council felt that that was too harsh, so they decided to eliminate the recreation department, went with an 11% and 13% across-the-board cut for city staff and the police department. So, it was, I was the lone vote against the fake, the 13% cut, when I knew from the finance department that 20% kept all city employees employed. We've lost a whole generation of children in this town who have not had a recreation department, because the city council at the time would not bite the bullet, and they decided to cut the recreation department. So, I'm very glad to see the recreation department reestablished tonight, but the fact is, it was cut, and it was the fault of the city council at the time.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to make any comments on the new recreation director position? Thank you. Being none, I'll close by a comment on that. And now, we're going on to approval of the final agenda. Oh, pardon me, I skipped that one. We are now going to go to the honorary mayor. At this time, I'd like to introduce Robert Hepburn of Lawrence Jones Middle School. Mr. Hepburn?
Good evening. My name is Robert Hepburn, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Lawrence Jones Middle School, and tonight, I've been asked to talk to you.
Watch your mic closer.
Oh, sorry. And I've been asked to talk to you about my goals and interests, and some of my goals include getting straight A's for my whole school career, writing a book before I graduate high school, getting into honors English all four years of high school, going to London, speak fluent Mandarin and/or Spanish, going to college, becoming an author/s screenplay writer, someday owning a movie theater, writing a book series by the end of my life, buying an Audi, and working on a movie set as a screenplay writer. And writing the book before I graduate high school, so, as I said, I wanted to be an author and screenplay writer, and when I was walking, watching a documentary by J.K. Rowling, she said that she wrote her first book before she graduated high school, so I thought that would be a good goal for me to make for myself. And the reason I want to go to London was because one day, I just got this strange fascination from the culture and the weather, and ever since, I've always wanted to go there. Some of my interests include writing, producing and directing short films, hanging out with friends, reading, playing instruments, photography, and listening to big band music. The reason I love reading is because when I read, I feel like I go into a different dimension and watch someone's life through their perspective, and whenever I want to stop reading, I just close the book, and their whole life stops and waits for me. And the reason I like listening to big band is because it just makes me feel really happy, and I, whenever it's on, I just feel like wanting to dance to it. And, thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Robert. Don't go anywhere yet.
Yeah.
We're going to open up maybe some questions and thoughts from our fellow council members. Counselor Lamond?
Well, I'm supposed to be writing down questions and ideas and things to ask, and I was too busy just listening, almost. You know, everybody that comes forward, usually Robert brings a lot of hard work, a lot of interesting ideas, but you really caught me with a few things. I got to ask you, Mandarin, specifically, where did the focus from that come from? What led you in that direction?
Well, last year, while I was in seventh grade, my history teacher, Ms. Zimmerman, she said that, I think it was Bill Gates, he went in a meeting either in China or Japan, and he learned fluent Mandarin in like three weeks. So, just like someone like that high, learning Mandarin for that, it just seems like something that you should learn for having to have a meeting over there or something like that.
Well, I think it's a good example, too, the difference that teachers make in our life. Good teachers sometimes steps in the right place, and who knows what it does for us. I see you're doing a lot of work here, although I'm glad to see it on that huge list of work that you set out for yourself before you graduate. At least you're looking at getting an Audi, too, so I'm glad you're going to give yourself a little fun. I'm happy to see that. I'm just going to close by saying, particularly noticed the strong interest in English, writing, creative issues, and I think that's a benefit of reading. I love the way you describe that. It does illuminate other people's lives for us, and I think it grows as a people. Clearly, it's doing that for you, so a pleasure to meet you tonight, Robert.
Pleasure to meet you, too.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, wow. You are very exciting. You want to do a lot in your life. Do you have any thoughts on the subject matter for the book that you want to write? You seem to have, be so planned.
Yeah. Well, I've been trying to, I've been thinking about trying to, like, just look around and see what I could write about, but I'm just going to try and let it come to me, and when it does, I'll just think super details about it, and just spend a lot of time focusing on that.
I also particularly liked your insight into when you read a book and how you get into that book, and then, when you close it, it's like their life stands still for you. That insight was just really amazing, because that is sort of what happens when you read. So, anyways, I wish you a lot of luck, and it certainly seems like you have some really great goals, and I think you're going to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Skilman?
Thank you. I'm always amazed at how well-spoken you guys are, come up here from the Honorary Mayor Program, and it's just really impressive. So, I don't know if you were nervous, it sure didn't look like it, but you were really well-prepared, so you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And you were talking about learning languages and going to London. Just to give a heads-up, they kind of speak English, but it's really different than what we think of as speaking English. I remember I went there, just, it's really fascinating to go and experience a different culture and see, hang out with people, and find out how people your own age communicate and what's slang, and you know, just, it's kind of, it's really fun. So, just to give a heads-up, you will be learning a new language, even just going to London. So, but that's wonderful about the writing and the screenplay. I used to work down in Los Angeles, and it's a really fun, energetic place to be, and so, maybe you can adapt your own book into a screenplay. Who knows?
Yeah.
So, anyways, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here, and looking forward to hearing back from you at our next meeting.
Counselor Lawson?
Yeah, Robert, I'm exhausted. I mean, the list of things that you want to get accomplished in such a short period of time is phenomenal. I'm a little confused about the Audi still, but you can just put that aside for now. I think all of these things you listed here, there's probably some opportunities with our new recreation director and some of your writing skills in, you know, putting together descriptions of events or classes, and it sounds like your writing skills are pretty sharp already at this point. Certainly, your speaking skills are, so definitely your writing skills are. It's pretty clear to me. So, keep that in mind. We have your contact info, so she may be calling on you, you never know. Be prepared for that, and that's, that'd be a really good experience for you. You know, there aren't many middle-school-aged children that are potentially helping out a city and putting things together. So, anyway, something to look forward to, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Robert, like the other council members, I'm very impressed with your ambitions and your goals. I think that's phenomenal. You did a fantastic job coming up here, I appreciate that. We typically assign a little homework. Sounds like that's not something that's foreign to you. We are looking to revamp our community, our teen center that we had several years ago before the worst economic collapse since the Depression, where we had to eliminate our recreation department, so now, we're bringing that back. And we would like for you to reach out maybe to some of your peers, and maybe come back with some ideas or suggestions that you think might be supportive of the city and supportive of the community at large at your age, and some suggestions and ideas of what you think, and we'll look forward to that. So, two weeks from now, the 26th, we'll look forward to you coming back, and hopefully you can give us a little bit of insight that us seniors may not have. And is there anyone here in the audience that you brought with you you'd like to introduce?
Um, well, I have my mom, Holly, and my brother, Carter, my grandma, Sandra, and my aunt, Tiffany.
Hi. Well, thank you all so much for coming, Robert. Thank you very much for participating in it. I think the goal of the Honorary Mayor Program is to shed a little light on public service and community service to the youngsters in the community, and give them an introduction of what local government work looks like. It's not always pretty, but it's amazing what we can get done. So, I'll look forward to seeing you then, and if you'd like, we can go ahead and take a picture now, if that's appropriate. Thank you, Robert. [applause]
so we can welcome him to the meeting as well.
And I just needed to, do we need to open up the honorary mayor to public comment? At this point, I would like to open up to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the honorary mayor program? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Thank you. And now, we have the approval of the final agenda.
No changes.
Thank you. And now, we move on to citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. So, now, we open up citizens' business, and I have some speaker cards. Kevin Ginger. Good evening.
It has recently come to my attention that sometime in April 2014, an incident occurred which led to recalled councilmember George Berich filing a lawsuit against the City of Kattati in January of 2015. In November of 2015, as many of you know, the city's insurance company settled for $50,000 without admitting any wrongdoing, instead of paying the higher estimated cost of fighting the case. Recalled councilmember Berich, who often speaks of his fondness for the City of Kattati and his desire to make improvements for the betterment of the city and its citizens, was quoted recently in the Press Democrat, saying, "It is a huge victory for the people of Kattati." Furthermore, in the article, recalled councilmember Berich stated, "I would have settled this case early on for a dollar and an apology." Now, I'm not here to dispute this incident in question or to suggest who may or may not have been wrong. However, after reading this article, I had one burning question that I feel deserves an answer. Recalled councilmember Berich, as a former city councilmember, a concerned citizen, and a self-proclaimed advocate for the citizens of the City of Kattati, you've been given $50,000, and you've implicitly stated that the lawsuit was never about the money. What exactly do you plan to do with the $50,000 that will directly benefit the city and all of the people who live here? I understand the logistics and the fact that the money actually came from the insurance company, but in all reality, the city pays for that insurance, and the premiums it pays can be affected by the use of that insurance. So, without sidestepping, without excuses, the citizens of Kattati would like to know how you plan to improve the city you hold so dear. Thus far, all I have seen from your slanderous accusations and attempts to waste time and energy, directly and through your puppets."
Thank you. Okay, I have another card here from Lori Alderman.
Do you all believe in doing anything required legally of you in this city? My experience is that the city ignores all laws the city doesn't like. That was certainly true with not enforcing a single California Building Code or the laws that provided for safeguards for other properties and the environment with the public property now for 18 months. You are breaking the law right now. The law is that an abatement has 60 days after a change of ownership to be completed. That 60 days was up on December 2nd. This city continues to be negligent. Why hasn't, wasn't this issue put on the agenda this evening? I provided you with the California Building Codes that related to this matter. You all in the city also broke many provisions of the Brown Act and case law by the mayor last meeting, ordering the police chief, Parrish, to remove me for going over the time limit at the last council meeting. All I was doing was reading my statement, which was telling the truth of the city exposing some workers to high levels of chemicals and metals unwillingly that day, and in an unprofessional encounter with Vicky Parker. The city so lucked out that the webcast didn't record all of what happened because of technical difficulties. If Chief Parrish had laid one finger on me, I would own this city in damages, which is a historic comment that has also been said before in this chambers. I would receive damages for violating my civil rights, violating the Brown Act, and for ADA discrimination from my encounter with Vicky Parker. It is time for this council to stop its illegal acts and obey the law. I've had enough of the mistreatment from your illegal acts.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Berich?
Mr. Moore, you lied to get elected to this, to your position here on the council. You have a criminal record that you did not bring forth during the election, and you had the council members do a whitewash and cover-up of your criminalities. I'd like to read you an email from a police officer here in Kattati, which reads, "George, John Moore is a drunk. I arrested him years ago for driving under the influence, DUI, and he got out of it, pleading out to a drunk in public. He is an habitual, extremely intoxicated around the downtown area, and continues to drive drunk." So, folks, I'm going to pin this up on the wall so you can view that. So, folks, I'm going to pin this up on the wall so you can view that. And Mr. Moore also accuses me of filing frivolous lawsuits against the city, yet votes to pay me $50,000 to pay for some of my attorney's fees and my court costs and so forth. He uses the police chief to silence his critics at these meetings. He promised to run me out of town in these chambers. He forced his two young daughters to come up to this podium and demand that the city do something about my website. Remember that, Mr. Moore? And you stood behind him? Remember that? John Moore presents a clear and present danger to our community. Here's a guy who files frivolous complaints with the Fair Political Practices Commission that go nowhere with the investigators. Complaint after complaint after complaint. And like his wife, Lisa, John never contacted me in person, has never stepped foot into my office when I held office hours, never knocked on my door, and has refused to shake hands with me years ago. The man is a complete disgrace. Now he's mayor, oh my God. He is a committed socialist, ask anybody who knows him. John Moore felt that he and his family were entitled when they came to Catanas. Lisa spoke about this from the Diaz. They felt so entitled, they applied for rent control, and Lisa herself said, "You know, if it wasn't for rent control, we wouldn't have been able to live in Catanas." Ask her yourself, she said it on the record. Rent control and applying to save her relief is government assistance. John and his wife tried to get this occupied Catanas nonsense off the ground here in Catanas, and it failed miserably. And Moore doesn't believe in any more of the vision statements than Mr. Deloza does. He's shrunk it down to a little thing in the postcard over here. This entitlement mentality that you have, Mr. Moore, that you think that there's all this free money out there for the city is taking is absolutely asinine.
Time's up. Thank you.
Do you have another minute, sir?
No. Thank you.
One more minute.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's the letter, sir.
Anyone else like to speak on citizens' business?
For the record, there's no one behind me pushing me from the back up to this podium. I'd like to talk about my dad, John Moore. He is an amazing man, an amazing father, and he loves this city more than anyone. Both my parents do. He would do anything for this city. He volunteers so much. He was citizen of the year a few years back. He has done projects like rebuilding together, and he has volunteered to coach for my soccer teams and my softball teams because we didn't have any other coaches, and he's constantly volunteered in my Girl Scout programs when we didn't have anyone else to drive us somewhere or help out. He is an amazing son-in-law to my grandma who needs a lot of help. He's always there to help her and talk to her and be there for her, as well as he is for his brother, who's disabled, and he's there to help him out and get him whatever he needs. I think my dad will be an amazing mayor. I think he's a great man, and I think my mom was an amazing mayor. And, yeah, that's it.
Anyone else like to comment on citizens' business?
My name is Mammon Souza. I'd just like to say, as a citizen, my concerns are right now, right at this minute, and what goes forward, and I honor every one of you for your attempts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nixon?
My name is Cheryl Nixon, and I don't have a title. I can't say that I'm a council member, but I definitely can say I'm an ex-council member. And I'm not trying to throw any more stones here, but there's been plenty of slanderous, narcissistic comments from George Berich tonight, and he should be ashamed of himself. And you can laugh, but you are embarrassing yourself. I'm sorry that you can pick on a family like the Moores, John and Lisa, who have given themselves above and beyond for volunteering. I've never seen you at one of our --
Cheryl.
I've never seen George Berich volunteering at any of our community events, never. And I know what you've done, and I appreciate both what you and Lisa have done.
Thank you. Any other citizens' business?
Lisa Moore, former mayor of Catanas. I just want to set the record straight that when we moved to Catanas, when I moved to Catanas, rent control was in place for the city. I've never been on public assistance, other than when I was pregnant with the kids and I was on disability for the six weeks that I had my children. Rent control was for the whole city. Anybody that had rented here was privileged to that. So I just want to set the record straight. I'm so proud of my husband and my girls, and if my son was here, who's getting his master's degree in business at Oxford in England, he would be saying the same thing. And John is just an amazing man. I've been with him almost 35 years, and I know how much he has volunteered with the city because a lot of times I've dragged him along with me, and he's been a great, amazing partner. So, good luck this year.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on citizens' business? Being none, we will close citizens' business. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, a quick comment for the good of the order.
Absolutely, Councilman Lemon.
I just want to say to the general public, I always have at least some small personal amusement when I hear people being called socialists, because I'm reminded that most people would say that, probably learned that term in public school. Might want to think that one through a little bit in the future, because it invites some deeper thinking. But in terms of holding Mr. Moore accountable for not running Mr. Berich out of town, I don't think that's the council's business to weigh in on, although personally, I will always hold it against you for not getting that completed. Thank you.
And then, just for a point of clarification, I guess the council has gone from Marxist to socialist, so I guess we're moving in a different direction, so, thank you. So the next item we have on here is the direction for future agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have a motion?
Do you want to open for public comment?
On the consent, yes, I will. At this time, I'll open now. Public comment for the consent calendar, item number two. Anyone like to address that? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
A move to approve the consent.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Aye. And now we'll move on to public hearings. And then now we go to the regular agenda items. Number three, city council office conversion for recreation. Mr. Obed, do you have a presentation on that?
Yes, a brief presentation. Thank you, Mayor Moore, members of the council. So, as of course you all know, resuming the recreation program has been a long-held goal of the council through the recession, and the day has arrived that the programs are back. So, part of the logistics of that are finding a space that's in a prominent location for a high-traffic recreation function that will serve, it'll serve the community well in terms of not being hidden anywhere, you know, in a very, like I said, prominent location, but also one that works with the city and the way the city runs, so that we're all administratively together. And prior to the recession, the recreation program was run out of the civic center, and it was a little bit disconnected administratively from the city as a whole. And so the proposal before you tonight is a proposal to use the city council meeting office as our, potentially as our recreation office, and the office space as it stands right now can be used by the city council for meetings with constituents, and it also currently houses the mailbox and correspondence boxes, which are locked mailboxes. And if the council agrees to move forward on moving the recreation program into the council office, which is adjacent to the front doors there, how that would work is the locked mailboxes would move to the adjacent large conference room, so they'd be available to council members in the large conference room. And also, if the council desires to meet with constituents, the large council room is also available for meetings as the council office was or is currently. And with the conversion, it would be relatively minor. It would just be some minor office equipment, maybe new paint, potentially a new door, depending on how that public interface functions best. And it should be pretty straightforward and easy to do, but that's sort of the sum of what it would take to convert it to be pretty quick. But anyway, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the proposal.
Any existing questions from the council?
Can I ask a logistics question? So, given that conference room that you're going to move our boxes to is used for various meetings and things, will we need to schedule to get in there, or how do you see that working? Since I know it does get used.
Right. I don't see that being an issue, really. If there's, the conference room's really pretty large, and, you know, even going into the back of the conference room and getting mail and walking out, it wouldn't be that disruptive. So I don't see it being a major issue. And I think oftentimes council members come in towards the end of the day, anyway, if they're coming home from jobs or whatever they're doing during the day. So, again, that would be sort of off-schedule from when meetings normally would occur.
And if we wanted to use it to meet, would we have to schedule that with someone?
If it's during business hours, it'd be best to talk with the city clerk, just to make sure you get a confirmed time. Otherwise, it's always available.
Counselman Lemon?
Yeah, thank you. No real questions, more just a comment and request. I'll support this, I think it's the best use. It might be slightly less problematic, might be more problematic in terms of collecting mail, but I don't see that as an issue either. One request, we have some older pictures in the current room, I'd like to see those moved over to the new room over by where we have our stuff. And, you know, we've been so busy the last five, six years, history's kind of happened around us and passed us by, and some of it, we did want to capture. I know we wanted to get some pictures from the 50th put up in the council office, and it just didn't get done. If possible, I'd like to maybe see that accomplished as part of this, but with that, I fully support this. Welcome, Ashley, and we'll get you front and center in a good office.
Counselman Lemon, Counselman Plaza? I certainly think that that's a pretty underutilized office, and I would make sense to use that existing office and would support that. And then I don't know that we have a huge amount of mail these days, primarily it's electronic, so I'd support that. At this time, I will open up the conversation to the general public. Ms. Alderman?
This item is so telling about what is important to all of you here in these chambers. Definitely appearances are most important over substance. There is one line in the city budget about the recreation program. It's right here, $70,000 for, and it's contract services, and you have to pay the recreation coordinator out of that budget. Money's, it has to be taken out of the 71K. You all want to spend $10,000. It was not just a door, it's $10,000 worth of, on sprucing up a room in the city hall. $1 of every $7 allocated to recreation for appearances sake? According to CaliforniaCityFinance.com, Catanas spends 3% of the city budget on parks and recreation, and that's currently, compared to 15%, which is the median for all the other cities, and it goes up to 30% for other cities in California. In dollar amounts, that's $60 per capita for Catanas spends on recreation parks. The median for all other cities is, in California, with a $36 per capita is the median. It goes all the way up to $250 per person, per capita. This, lost my last page, this is way out of line, this recreation program. I was a recreation coordinator for the City of Santa Rosa. You don't just open up a building, put up a, open the doors, and you have a program. It takes planning, it takes much money to start one, and it's just not going to peer out of thin air. As far as redecorating an office, that's way down the line. Put up a folding card table for now, until you only have $70,000. It's wrong to put it on fancy things up for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berich?
Counsel, this is a terrible, terrible idea. The reason this unique council office is underutilized is because you people don't hold office hours, you're not doing your job, you're not utilizing that office to be in there to meet citizens, to hold open office hours, to allow walk-ins to come in. When I was on the council in 2009, I spent every Monday night from 5:00 to 8:00 in that room, had the lights on, and that light shined a beacon into town to let people know that there was a council member on duty and that anybody could come in and speak with a council member on that night. And it is wrong to change all the tradition and the history of that room and bring it to another part of the room. The fact is, I stood in that meeting at night when nobody was there with my sandwich board on the street, saying that a council member was on duty. I prayed that John Moore would come in and address his concern. I prayed that the bar owners would come in, Mr. Landman would come in, Mr. Deloza, who was AOL for over a decade, Ms. Skilman, we never saw you, Mrs. Harvey, I would really wish that you would have come in and gotten to know another council member and another point of view. It's a historic room, and to move it to another place in city hall is wasteful, and it is the wrong thing to do. I just can't, as a matter of fact, you know, we have a museum over here where the director is keeping all the historical items, you know, hostage and won't donate them to the city. She has said that the location for the museum is a temporary location. It's temporary, they're going to be moving. So why not use, why not coordinate with the recreation department to use that museum when they leave? Because they're planning on leaving. It's a huge space. The council, a real city council, needs an office up front. It says, "We are the city council leaders. When you come in, you turn to the left, we are here to help you." It's a place to have a cozy conversation in private, not in a big room where everybody can hear, you can close the door, you can have a confidential conversation. I urge you to keep the city council private office the way it is and find another solution for the recreation department, you know? You know, if the bar owners want to come in and want to organize, you know, white trash parties... white trash parties, and things like that downtown, like Cheryl Nixon does and so forth, they can come speak to people like us on the council. And they can say, "Look, if we want to have a white trash party, can you support us?" Like Mr. Moore supported the white trash parties. But don't move the chamber, the chamber offices, I mean, the council members' offices.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, sir.
Anybody else want to address this particular item? I'll close it. Public comment? Oh, go ahead.
Perhaps given my age, you know, I am younger, but if I were to want to address my city council, face-to-face, it has its merits, but I'd rather do email or phone. Because as for face-to-face, you have to schedule, you have to come, you have to set it up. Email is 24/7. And that's what I'm, that's my point.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this item? Being none, I will close public comment on item number three and bring it back to the council.
I have some comments, if I might.
Councilmember also?
You know, I, I, I don't see where there's any kind of tradition. Things change. You know, we used to have a police department down at that end, they're now in a whole separate building. I know when I, I don't hold office hours here at city hall, I make myself available to the citizens at local businesses. And then I'm not only meeting with citizens, because I have nothing to hide, I don't need a private room, but I'm also supporting the local businesses. And I think that's a better win-win situation than just sitting in a little tight room here and hoping somebody will come by. So I know, I don't know how other council members deal with that, but I think personally, then it's, I, my preferred method is certainly to meet out there. So I don't see this as a, a, a wrong thing to do, I see it as a wise thing to do. It's a small office space to begin with, but it's, as soon as you walk into city hall, it'll be right there on your left-hand side. So I think, a high-traffic standpoint, I think that's a really good move. Thanks.
Thank you.
And the only thing I was going to clarify is that, under the financial considerations, it's not to exceed $10,000, because I know the dollar amount was mentioned, but that's actually the ceiling of the highest that we would spend. So just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Ashlyn, may I?
I am supportive of this. I think that the recreation department coming in and getting it started, as most have said, it will be challenging to get that up and going again. And I think having it right there, front and center, will let people know that it's here again. I agree with council member Deloso. Oftentimes, I am either phoned by people, or emailed, or just even, a lot of times when I'm out walking, you know, people will stop me and talk to me, or, or in various businesses. So it's nice to have that office there if someone chooses to meet you there, but most of the time, I find that I talk to others out in the community or by phone.
Thank you. Councilman Lyman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree. I, I think my colleague, council member Deloso, put it perfectly. Really don't need to use that. It's, it's nice to have, I guess, your own office, but my ego doesn't need that. We work fine. I enjoy, when I do need to meet with the public, I usually take it out in the businesses in the community to meet face-to-face, and that works well. In, in terms of the investment, I want to point out, I don't think, personally, I don't read in this as this is something just for appearance sake or wasteful. What we want to have for this person for long-term success, not just in this one fiscal year, is a small, functioning office. And believe me, if you've never been in that office, there's no amount of money you can throw in to make it anything too special. So don't worry, it won't be too ostentatious. And finally, that investment, 10K, is a one-time investment. You take that over the number of years that it'll be used and benefit this community. Small investment. So I think as your counsel, what I'm here is, we're happy to give that space up, and it's a good thing to do. So I'll be supporting this vote tonight.
Thank you. I don't see that particular room in the past as having this magnanimous beacon of light coming out there, shining on some A board. So I think it'd be greatly utilized for our Department of Parks and Recreation, and we'll look forward to that. And again, I'd like to reiterate what Councilman Skilman said, in that it's up to $10,000, it's not a total of $10,000. So with that in mind, I would like to call for the votes.
Well, I'll go ahead and move to adopt a motion authorizing the conversion of the city council office for the recreation program.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, that's a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Now we will move on to item number four, which is amendment number two to Siemens' performance agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, more members of the council. So this item is, as you know, we, we partnered with Siemens, which is an energy services company, is referred to as NESCO. And we partnered with them on two projects. One was conversion of lighting fixtures throughout the city, both building fixtures and also streetlight fixtures. And the other part of the project was a water meter upgrade project. So the part we're talking about today is the energy portion, that's the, the lighting project. And the lighting project was, was, has been finished now, so it's all over. And you really can't, they did a great job with lighting technology these days, because you can't really see a noticeable difference in terms of the type of light that comes out, but it's far more efficient than the lighting we had before, which, you know, in perpetuity saves us quite a bit of money, especially over time on energy. And in addition to the city hall complex and the corp yard building, they also changed out all of our decorative streetlights, which you probably have noticed out there, they used to be that orange color, now they're like a white color, because they changed the lighting technology. And just the streetlights themselves, that lighting change cut the streetlight energy bill in half, 50%. So, anyway, this, this amendment is just basically a follow-on amendment, now that the project is done. The actual scope of work, like any construction project, the actual scope of work adjusts slightly here and there, based on conditions they find. And I, I can't honestly, I can't single out any particular thing, but there's little things here and there that we just adjusted as we went along, like I said, like any construction project. And so this, because Siemens guarantees the savings, it's, they guarantee that, that they will save at least as much energy as they projected to begin with, or better. And that's a financial guarantee, right? So if they don't meet it, then they pay us the cost of not meeting it. But anyway, that being the case, when the project is done, they just do a final adjustment to what was actually installed versus what the projected installation scope of work was before. So what you have before you, amendment number two, is essentially just cleaning that up and using the, the as-built installation for the guarantee. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman? No questions? I will open up item four, amendment to number two to Siemens Performance Agreement to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this? There being no one, I will close the public comment on that. And now I will call for a vote.
I would move to authorize the city manager to execute amendment two to the Clean Energy Performance Contract with Siemens Industries Incorporated. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect, that's a 5-0 vote. Thank you. And no correspondence and pending legislation at this time. Now we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I have three items tonight. The first is, you may have seen the, the Nixle alert, or the Nixle message, I should say, it wasn't really so much an alert, but a message about the dispatch remodel, is the police station dispatch remodel that's going on this week. And the, what I wanted to just tell you and everyone here tonight is that during the remodel, as you can imagine, a 911 operations center, it has a lot of computer equipment, it's pretty involved, and you can't just remodel it. You can't move stuff around while the, you know, the person on the headset walks around, the people are moving stuff around. So during the remodel for this week only, they've rolled the phones to the Sonoma County Sheriff's Dispatch Center, and our dispatchers were up there fielding calls at that dispatch center instead of here at this dispatch center. So because those dispatchers are relocated for the week, the lobby is closed during the daytime. Now, and the Nixle message and also posted on the door of the lobby is the non-emergency dispatch phone number, which anyone can call if they need to get access to the police station. But normally, doors are open during the day, they're not this week because of that. And just a reminder to everyone, that's going on this week. And then I also wanted to circle back on the long-range property management plan, which the council saw in early December. As you may recall, the long-range property management plan is the, so with the, it was the last piece of the dissolution process with Department of Finance. And basically, what the long-range property management plan said is, all these formerly, all these properties that were formerly owned by the redevelopment agency, but now owned by the successor agency, and now what do you do with them? Do they become city properties because they have a city of governmental use, like a park, for example? Or are they some surplus piece of property that Department of, State Department of Finance thinks you should sell, and then distribute the proceeds to the taxing entities? So whoever gets property tax, right? At the meeting in early December, there were a couple of issues that Department of Finance had raised in a, in a preliminary review that we talked about at the meeting. And just to refresh everyone's memory, the first was an assurance from the council in the form of a resolution that the successor, from the successor agency, that the two properties, the two properties I'm talking about are 80 George, 80 George Street, and also the vacant parcel behind the depot, Park and Ride, which is south of the depot, like, south of the depot building and Park and Ride area. Just that there was a resolution that confirmed that it would be used for governmental use, specifically parking use. And that's one of the actions the council took that night, as well as the oversight, oversight board approved it later. And then the one property, this is the property that's on Santero Way, on the corner of Iskati and Santero, that, that corner piece in front of the train station depot, that that one property would be ultimately sold for future development. That was designated for, for sale and development. And then finally, there was a long discussion about the, in Little Plaza Park, the Lions Club lease with that building there. And I just wanted to, so it's a long intro to say, I'm happy to report back that Department of Finance agreed to the, the plan as you saw it, so, as proposed. And that's good news, because everything that, that we talked about, Department of Finance agreed with. So those two properties, 80 George and the vacant parcel, they, they accepted that resolution from the council, and they're good with that. The, the one vacant, the one property in front of the depot building, they agreed that that should be sold, which we also agreed with. And then the Lions Club, they don't have, we don't have to do anything with their lease, so they're good as is. So thanks to, thanks to Vicki and working diligently with DOF over the holidays to get that done. So that was, that was good news. And then finally, one last thing, just about water conservation and our, sort of our water situation right now with the recent rainfall. I thought it would be timely to give everyone an update on where we stand. And actually, there was a recent article in the Press Democrat, I think just yesterday, about the, the state of the water situation, both locally and statewide. And so locally, the, the, our customers in Katati saved 26% over the same period in 2013. So our state mandated goal was 20%. So we not only hit our state mandated goal, mandated goal, we exceeded it by 6%. So just a lot of thanks to our customers for really digging deep and getting that, getting that done, and actually exceeding the, exceeding the goals. So that was pretty impressive. And statewide, I think, as you might remember, early in the spring when we issued the emergency conservation order, we had talked about the, what the state was doing, the state issued a one-year order, basically, that was statewide. And statewide, the drought is not over, there, there's a lot of reservoirs, a lot of the state reservoirs, like Trinity Reservoir, Shasta Norville, or, or 50% or less of the average. So even though we're getting good rains so far, we're definitely not out of the woods, certainly not statewide. And any sort of conservation requirement issued by the state, issued by the governor, applies statewide. So it applies to us regardless of our local situation. And right now, the governor is talking about, and has actually, I guess, issued an executive order calling for an extension of the restrictions until October of 2016, if the drought conditions persist through this month. And it seems, based on the rainfall situation and the reservoir situation statewide, that that's likely to occur. It's likely that the rest of the state will still be in a drought situation. So we expect that the emergency regulations to continue through the year, at least through, through October. And, and that being probably the case, just a reminder to everyone that the, the city does offer a whole variety of water conservation programs and incentives. And of course, we're happy to work with anyone to help make their water use more efficient. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions on the report.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Any questions from the council?
Other than a comment, very nice work on the Lions Club. I think I can probably safely speak for all of us. I'm seeing some smiling faces. Good job to you and, and Ms. Parker. Thank you both.
I would reiterate that. Nice job on that one. I, I do want to ask a question regarding the, some of the remodeling that you're talking about at the dispatch. Was that remodeling due to the necessity to make that a much more ergonomically friendly workspace for those employees, so that we prevent accidents and injuries down the road?
Correct, yeah. The remodel, so, so California Office of Emergency Services is actually, they actually have a fund that can fund these types of upgrades in emergency dispatch centers. And that's the funding that's being used to create, to generate, to do these ergonomic upgrades in the dispatch.
So that's not part of our general fund?
It is not.
So that's that free money from the government, so to speak?
It's, it's a grant, yes.
Thank you. And my other, my last question, we talked about the 27% conservation of 2015 in the water, that's over 2014?
2013 was the baseline year.
2013, okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions on that. I will open up the public comment on city manager's report, if there's anyone that would like to speak. Ms. Alderman?
Generally, I'd like to point out that there is not, with, with a lot of the programs that Mr. Obed is in charge of and the city manager, we haven't seen, the citizens have not seen the budget, or there has not been any access to any budgets on all of this since June. We've had no updates, there's nothing in the packets that show what the balance balances are, how, where things are being taken, where, what's being transferred to what. We have no idea of what's happening with the city as far as financially, and it's not being disclosed to any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else which would like to address the city manager's report? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that. Any, if I may ask a question to the city manager, I don't believe that our budget has changed from the last update that we have done, has it?
No, any change, any budgetary changes have to come before the council for authorization.
Thank you. So there's been no changes and no line item changes?
Nothing other than what's come before the council.
Thank you very much. Okay. And now we will go to our city council reports. Any council reports?
I actually don't have anything to report this time, given the holidays, there was a lot of people taking breaks, so, but, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, just a couple of items. One is, I want to thank the staff for the repairs that have been made to the whole AV system with the clocks functioning. And it sounds like these microphones are a little bit more powerful, so hopefully people are able to hear better than in previous, and I'm seeing a lot of this going on, so that's a good sign. So thank you guys for, for getting on that and taking care of that over the holidays. So thank you guys for, for getting on that and taking care of that over the holidays. And, uh, on December twenty-second, as I had mentioned at our last council meeting in earlier December, um, we did the second annual food drive with the California Homemakers Association, and it was, um, a successful event. I think we put together ninety-plus food boxes, all of which had, um, fresh fruits and vegetables, some canned goods, um, starches, and then each box also had either a frozen turkey, frozen ham, or something large and protein-wise. Um, the difficult part of that day is always to get volunteers to transport them out. There's always volunteers to put the boxes together, but transporting them is always a challenge. I think I was here till about four-thirty, just to try and, "Come on, you guys, get moving, let's go." Um, and they were delivered all over the county, it's not just a Catatti, Runer Park delivery, they're, they're all over the county, sorry, I never turned this way, I forget you're back there. But, um, uh, you know, it, again, it was a successful event, and, and I really want to thank Oliver's Market, I contacted them several weeks in advance, and asked, you know, "Would you be willing to make a donation of, um, fresh fruits and vegetables?" And, well, sure, you know, "What are you thinking of?" And I put this list together of fruits and vegetables that would be available this time of year, and they gave like a fifty-pound box of each. I wasn't expecting that, so it was a little overwhelming, um, I had to make a couple of trips to get all that stuff over here, but, um, and it was a lot easier this year moving those boxes without a broken shoulder. I just want to say, I just learned from experience on that, but, so that was on the twenty-second, and, um, hopefully we'll do it again next year. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Well, last Friday, um, I got to attend the, um, swearing-in of the SMART Chief of Police, and that was held, um, at our Catatti train station, which was very nice, and very nice for our community. There was a lot of folks there, a lot of police folks from kind of all over, and federal people, and just all kinds of people. And it, and it was really nice, it was nice to utilize our train station, and nice to see the swearing-in. And when we got done with the swearing-in, um, Farad said, "Well, we have a surprise for all of you." And we said, "Oh, that's nice, what is it?" Um, we actually got a ride on the SMART train. So, um, it was actually pretty fun, for those that, um, could go. We actually rode the train from here, at our Catatti station, up to the Santa Rosa station and back, so, that was pretty exciting.
Thank you. Councilman Lyman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty short, just going to report on some reorganization. It's the beginning of the year, changes abound. We have a new chair at Sonoma Clean Power Authority, Mr. Patrick Slater of Sebastopol, the outgoing mayor there, as well as the vice-chair last year stepped into the chair. And our vice-chair for this year will be councilmember Dave King from Petaluma. Uh, so two new people, unanimous support for them on the, on the board, and moving forward to what will be an interesting new year, I'm sure. SETA, our CPA, just the other day, we had our reorganization too. Supervisor Rappaport, who had been serving as vice-chair, stepped into his term as chair. There was some back and forth with some of the other seats, uh, but ultimately it settled with our vice-chair being Carol Russell of Cloverdale. Director Russell served for a lot of years in SETA, and is always very involved in all the conversations and what's going on, so I, I think this is a very appropriate choice. Executive committee reformed with Kathy Miller of Petaluma, myself, and Lori Gallion from Sonoma as the alternate. So, that's what we have for the next two years.
Thank you. And, um, I don't have anything outside of what's already been addressed to report, other than, um, councilmember Skilman will be taking over for the library advisory board. And, um, with that, um, I look forward to a fantastic twenty sixteen, regardless of some of the negative, um, spiteful, petty. But I look forward to an exciting twenty sixteen, I look forward to some of the projects, and I look forward to working with our council and our staff, and with that, I adjourn the meeting.